So I will call the meeting to order. I will start by saying that Liz and Andre cannot join us tonight. And because Liz cannot join us, she has asked that we take the agenda item related to Voices for Education off the agenda and put it on the agenda for the 17th so that she can talk about it. I think we were talking about it under task teams. So it isn't all that clear that it was on the agenda, but it was part of our plan and we're going to put it off. So first item is comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Anyone here to speak? No. Okay. Thanks. All right. Next is our consent agenda consisting of the meeting minutes and the warrants. Does anything need to be pulled from the consent agenda? All right. I'll entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes from November 5th and approval of warrants. Thanks, Diane. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right. Well, we are very fortunate to have with us tonight Val Gardner. I think I knew Val at UVM. I think we were in the same class. And Val was the longtime principal at CBU and has done a lot of work with the Vermont School Boards Association in the area of policy governance. So she has trained a lot of boards. She's here tonight to help us do an overview, which is part of the process that we outlined that would lead us to making a decision about whether we're going to go full bore into learning policy governance. So this is an opportunity to learn more about what policy governance is all about so that we'll be prepared to make a final decision about whether this is the direction we're going to head in. So with that, Val, welcome.
Thanks for your time tonight. First, the purpose tonight is first off to dig a little bit deeper. I know you've done an extensive amount of work, the committee's actually done pretty -- when I was reading through it, I was thinking, whoa, you have really dug pretty deeply into this. So my role tonight is to not advocate for policy governance, not to convince you about policy governance, but to really try and deal with any questions you have and do a comparison. What I would offer is the way Vermont School Boards does this is it's a four-phase process. And if you choose to enter it, you make decisions whether you want to continue at changes of phases. So what ends up happening is people start and say, oh, man, I want to do this. And then they get into it and go, yeah, I want to keep doing it. Or, oh, whoa, wait a minute, we don't want to do this. So what my intent today is to give you, I talked with Martha and Beth, to try and have this be meaningful for you rather than a stand and deliver on my part. So there will be a little bit of information at the beginning, but in essence, what I wanted to do is sort of do a side-by-side of issues that you may be dealing with and how you make determinations on your board on how you do that, and then give you a comparison of what it would look like under policy governance, and then just open it up for questions. Okay? So I think the first thing you may have gotten from your governance work, and this is just pieces that I think are important as a framework in any governance and any model conversation, that governance really needs to be thinking about the future and is generative in nature, that if you're just dealing with today, you're really missing part of the responsibility you have as a board, that really you need to be thinking, I was thinking today, that your students that are entering as kindergarteners will graduate in what year?
Kindergarteners. Kindergarteners.
Thirty-two?
Thirty.
Thirty-two or thirty-three.
Yeah.
They will be in your system for that length of time. And if you as a board are spending your time thinking about 2020, you're going to be behind the ball curve a little bit. The other piece is, is how do you deal as a board with the issue of management, the issue of today, and the issue that people have stuff that happens? So in essence, there's a tension that goes between those two pieces. And one of the things you need to think about as a board is where should a board be spending a majority of its time? And policy governance really is pretty clear about having a bias, about being more on the right, the left-hand side, and finding ways to make sure that today is taken care of. The other general principle in terms of any governance is the difference between the idea of a trustee and a representative. Are you clear on that concept? So take a look and just read through, and then just turn to a colleague, another board member, and say, what's the difference between those two?
Decision maker.
Just have a quick conversation and see what's the difference. What's the same and what's different?
Well, it's good that the trustee is making decisions based upon long-term interest. It's about him.
Whereas the representative is acting on behalf of the constituency.
Yeah.
So.
The trustee and the rep.
Just either.
What do you see? Todd?
A representative would be more of, I would say, aligned with a representative in the House, whereas a trustee is more of a senator. They're there for the long term.
It's an interesting way to think about it. Yep. Could you be a trustee but also be in the House? And could you be a House, could you be a representative and be in the Senate? What's the difference between the two? Doesn't matter where you're placed.
No, it's more about the immediate concerns as opposed to the long term or the, yeah, I would just put it simply that way, as being reactionary to the pulse of the public at that time as opposed to taking that into consideration, but also what the long-term needs are and making more of a long-term decision.
Go ahead.
I think about it a little bit differently. I would think of a representative and a senator as the same because they're elected by the people to represent their interests. I think of a trustee as someone whose responsibility is to an organization. So for instance, there are folks in the House and Senate of Vermont who can be elected to be a trustee at the University of Vermont. Once you become a trustee at the University of Vermont, your responsibility is completely to UVM. It is not to the House and Senate members who elected you.
I think the difference really here is how do you begin making decisions and framing your thinking? In terms of a representative, you are really going and listening to other people and doing their will to some degree, and it may go against what your frame is or what the long-term mission or vision of the, and values of the organization are. This is what people told me they wanted, this is what I'm going to do, even though I may agree with it or even though I disagree with it. In terms of the trustee, you're going to listen to people, but you're also in a role that has a little bit different view of the organization. And you're going to make decisions about stewarding that organization and making it the decisions based on that long-term interest rather than the immediate. I would offer that if this needs to be something that you decide as a board, because if you are on the representative side, and I'm not going to put a value judgment on whether you are or you aren't, policy governance is a tough road to hold. Policy governance really requires you to be on the other side and do a lot of work with the community, not just parents, with the whole community, to figure out what are their values, what are they saying they need. So if, one of the things that you're going to need to do is make a decision as a board, are we representatives or are we trustees? And if you come out on the representative side, I would offer policy governance is going to be a struggle for you. I'm not saying one's better than the other. I'm just saying boards that have tried to go into policy governance as representatives, it's really hard. All right?
I would just, I think the value of our presence as trustees or otherwise as we think about the vision for the organization and the mission and the work is enhanced by what we bring, representing what we know of the folks who we live with. If we're a parent, what our hat is as a parent, our perspectives and our experiences help inform the conversations as they happen here. So it doesn't feel completely mutually exclusive, but at least it feels as though we have a bigger responsibility than any single hat we wear when we come sit. We have a responsibility to the bigger vision and mission of the organization. So.
Yeah. I think that the piece that I would just add, that under a policy governance model, you have a responsibility to get beyond stakeholders and get beyond beneficiaries, to be able to be able to go out and meet with any number of people in the community and get any number of perspectives, because my experience with boards is you get a lot of parent perspective. And yet you don't get a lot of broad perspective of who else is in the community. And policy governance says to you, you have to do that. And you do it in two ways, and we'll talk about that. So that becomes just something that is foundational, no matter which way you go in terms of the model that you use. I'm going to get really broad here because we could spend hours getting into each one of these. If your decision is to move to policy governance, then the actual, there would be actual training modules around it. But here are the general principles. There are four policy areas, and I'm going to break each one of these down. The policies are interrelated and define a system unlike the National School Boards Association, which is a set of policies by area. So if you're dealing with school personnel, there's no connection necessarily to students. If you're dealing with board operations, so there's a list of policies. Generally, those policies run in the hundreds or run in the seventies. Policy governance has four policy areas, about 44 policies. And generally speaking, they are driving a way of running the organization so they are not disparate, they are linked. Clearly defines roles, responsibilities, and accountability through explicit policies, not by generalized agreement. Right? And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But I think it's the roles, responsibilities, and accountability that come into play. And this is what it requires the board to do. Focus its work on linking with the community to look at future needs, not just immediate needs, what's going on in the future. This is where people get nervous. You delegate through policy to the superintendent and monitoring the superintendent's work to be compliant with the policy. Generally speaking, there are two areas that you do, you have expectations for the superintendent. ENDS, which is what you want the school to produce, that you've worked with the community to say, here's the results we want. And then the other area is called executive limitations, and that's what we're saying, you have authority to do all of this stuff, but you can't screw up in these ways. So the way you delegate is through policy. And it's very clear what the superintendent can't do. The superintendent is free to do anything else as long as the superintendent does not violate the policy or go out of compliance. And then the other piece is act based on its policy, complete a yearly review. So that's really, one of the things that I would offer is a little bit different, a lot different, under policy governance than under other models, is many models have very clear roles and responsibilities. Many models do a very clear job of evaluating the superintendent. No other model says, here's our expectation for ourselves as boards, and here's how we have to make sure that we're doing what we say we're doing. And so it's a way of really passing culture on. When you have turnover, people come on, and here's the expectation. It isn't, how do I work on this board? Questions on that? So I'm going to just go through these. How many have gone through this already? Okay, so for some, it's new. Here are four areas, and I'm just going to have you read them. And if you've got any question. So in essence, it's saying, here's what we want to get. We're going to make sure the superintendent has the authority to get those things, but we're going to not let that superintendent do just what they want when they want. We're going to say, here's what we're worried about. We're going to be very clear in what we're delegating to the superintendent, and we're going to figure out how we work with each other. We're going to be clear about that. We're going to expect it of ourselves, and then how we work with the community. In this model, governance is board work, management is the superintendent's work. And that's a real struggle in most situations. Because people come to board members and expect them to take care of problems. In this, the board's accountability and the monitoring are the two policy areas of board superintendent delegation, governance process, and the superintendent is accountable for results and executive limitations. The piece here is that the board develops the ENDS. The superintendent does not. And I think you've already sort of had that conversation, what are the indicators when I looked at, what are the things we want this school, students to look like when they come out? That's in essence in policy governance and ENDS statement. So really, the board links to the community and is doing, here's the struggle for boards who go into policy governance. You are so used to doing what you do that you get into, let's check the financial report, let's do the consent agenda. And going out and linking with the community is a totally new and totally different way of engaging. And so most boards who are in the process of moving to policy governance just keep doing things a little bit differently, but never do the linkage with the community. And in essence, your job is to go out and say, what's going on in this community? What's going on in the state? What are some of the forecasts? What are some of the things we need to be talking with? I'm working with a board now whose enrollment is declining at such a severe rate that they are now saying, we need to meet with the planning commission, we need to meet with the county to figure out what's going on here and what are the plans for this community That's a different role. Engage in strategic thinking and gather perceptions of all members of the community, not just the people who show up. And I think Essex has been in a, I know Essex and Essex Town have been involved in a process to get community engagement around the town. It's a same similar process for the schools. And then your work is to monitor student performance, our superintendent's performance in terms of the ENDS and executive limitations, plan and deliver board education. So you're learning yourself, you're not just sitting here, you're having some education about what's the future look like, what's happening with these things, and then build an annual work plan and processes for community engagement. So that's really what the board's work is.
How does the, how does the linking with the community make its way into the governance work itself? Like how, where does that, where does that, where is that connection made? If the board is out collecting information, getting feedback, getting thoughts and ideas, you know, having big picture discussions, when does that feedback ever make it into the actual governance of the district?
So in, where people are doing it well, and it's, it is a very new way of being in the world for boards, you actually will set up a yearly plan around that. So you may decide, we're going out and we're going to be talking with the planning commission, we're going to talk with the select board, we're going to talk to whatever in these towns to see what the town plan is saying. You would then come back and begin to say, what are the implications for us? So you would put into your work plan the ability to come back with that data and information, and rather than spending the time perhaps doing work around school and running the school, you'd be thinking, what's this mean for our ENDS? What's this mean for what we need to be thinking about for budget limitations?
Yes, I don't really understand how something like demographic forecasting or translating the perceptions of the community into the actual functioning of the district is any less something that we would want the superintendent and executive team to be responsible for than curriculum. I mean, I'm not an expert on what would happen to our community if the plant closed, but presumably Brian has thought about that, you know? Like, why is this an appropriate board role?
I think that's the question you need to ask, because I would offer that the superintendent has the responsibility of running the school. If their job is also to project into the future, then some of the stuff of running the day-to-day of the school will move off. So it really is the issue of what you see as your role. And if you see your role as saying to the superintendent, you do the projections into the future, you do that. Under policy governance, it's saying that's the board's job, because you are representing the community and you have the ability, hopefully, to get to a wider audience than perhaps the superintendent does. So I see some question with it. Under policy governance, that is the board's role. If you choose another model, you can turn to the superintendent and say, you need to I would offer what it does in communities who are doing that, it changes the board's perception in the community about what their role is and what their work is. Because all of a sudden, you're meeting with a broad group of people and asking questions that are different than what's been in the past, which I would offer, the superintendent does not have the opportunity to do. Can ask him to do it. Administrators can do it. It's just, it's just the model. And I wouldn't purport one is better than the other. It, what serves the needs of you as a board, you as a community, and the superintendent's ability.
Is that engagement with the community also an opportunity for the board to educate the community about the work that's being done in the school system?
I think, I've seen it done a couple of ways. One is educating the community in terms of what's going on in the school. The other is working with the community. I know one group who had as an ENDS the issue of creativity, that students had a level of creativity. And he said, we don't know what that looks like. And what they ended up doing was calling a group of artists, a group of people to come in, and they held a community forum of what does, what does creativity look like? They then took that back and said, here's some of the things we need to be thinking about. That then went to the superintendent. So there are different ways. You can be talking about, here's the future of what we're projecting around, how students with special needs are going to be met. We're going to let the community know that, what are their values around that. You're not asking them for answers, you're asking for values. But it is, you know, this, this school district had Daniel Pink come in, who was talking about the future. That would be things you'd invite the community to come to, not just faculty. And then you'd seek their input in some way. But it's a change in role. It's a change in role. Right? Any other questions? Here's what I'd like to do is, with another person, come up, first individually, think about two things that your board has responsibility for, or it's come to the board for them to do specific action, just two things. And what I'd like you to do, come up with those two things, then get in a group of two and come up with two things you want to bring up for us to compare. So what's the, what's the work the board does? What do you got going right now?
We're getting ready for budgets.
Budget? So one of the responsibilities you have is a budget. So let's just take that one for now. Okay? Let's just take budget. Here's what I'd like you to do. I'd like you to get in groups of three, and what I'd like you to do is individually write down the answers you have to these questions. Don't start talking, which is really hard for some people. But what I want to do is give everybody an opportunity to really think through how they view it. And here are the questions I want you to do. What's the work that the board does around budget? Be very specific. What does the superintendent do? You can do it sort of in broad terms, but be clear. How is it determined whether it's the board's responsibility or the superintendent's responsibility? What's the board's? What's the superintendent's? What guides the work? How do you know that's yours? And if you're doing it, what tells you what to do? And if it's the superintendent, what tells the superintendent what to do? When questions arise, what's the process for answering those questions? And when the work's completed, how is the group, how is the work measured? So I want you to think about your own board process right now as it relates to budget. How is it done? Who does what? Take a couple minutes, just write those down.
I'll probably need like, three, four more minutes.
Okay, no, thanks for letting me know.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick.
What is the work that the board does by test?
Very broad parameters. Like, don't go over.
Um, I put down, the board sets guidance direction. I put her, approves budget figure to be put before the voter. Um, it's, you know, that, I left myself another space, I couldn't come up with all of that.
I had both of those, I said, we get the process and the framework from the administration. We provide the budget guidance, we react and respond to information provided by the administration, ask questions, and then ultimately approve a budget to vote before the voters.
Mm-hmm.
And then the superintendent, CEO, maybe slash CEO.
Okay, so, okay, so.
I just ordered a meal.
Exactly.
I'm not sure.
Um, superintendent evaluates the needs of the students, the faculty, and overall maintenance of the building. Essentially, how, how does she keep, she, okay, in this case, how does she keep the system functioning? No, it's what's the, what's the, how do you have the inputs? The budget is the inputs on how to make that system function.
I, it was a little more mechanical, but I, I was like, brings the budget.
And we're sort of the first line of going, that's not going to fly, or yes, that adequately represents what the community is looking for. But in terms of building the actual budget, we have very little involvement whatsoever.
Right, that's what I, and the majority is, is all sour. It has majority of it, we have no control over.
Yeah.
Well, and you don't necessarily know just because of the X amount of dollars in a certain place that you're gonna get what you want.
Right.
Detail with large scale changes or unexpected, like transportation or SEL. You know, there was like a specific presentation, which is, you know, unusual, but only typically tends to recur when we have a large scale difference from a prior year.
Right. And from a dollar sense perspective, the transportation number within the context of the whole budget wasn't really huge.
No.
But the comp, the issue was complicated.
The only other thing I have is that they had information from the state that is important to the process. And I also put operational needs. So I think the most important thing to do is more with the stakeholders within the committee.
They do.
There's, but there is, how is it determined whether it's the board's responsibility or the superintendent's? I don't think there is a set way to determine.
The board's responsibility has been, get something passed that's generally in the best interest of the community.
Yep.
And the administration takes responsibility for delivering us a set of details that we then try to get passed. And.
We're starting like based on the impact of the taxes.
Well, this community's, in my experience, hasn't, had, has been very supportive of the.
Right, but I mean.
Yeah, but us like interfering in any given detail is very.
Getting ten different asks on it.
We should put more money into.
We're not guided by like, always brought back the idea of how this is gonna serve the vision. How will this investment support achieving the vision for students?
Right.
So I think that that's where like, each person's curiosity could be less effective or efficient than it might be otherwise if we were bound by some, you know, bigger cuts. Ends are otherwise like, the mission or some.
But the board's goal is to ferret out, you know, what the direction is and what the ultimate future is. So it's, you know, can we, we pay, do we authorize the superintendent to buy the boiler? Cause it's a humongous cost, do we buy it now? Or can we wait another year? Okay, do we start putting money aside for the boiler because we know the darn thing's gonna go? Okay, so it's, you know, so it's authorizing that.
And how does that connect to the goals or responsibilities we set for the superintendent? So is it maintenance of, you know, ongoing maintenance of facilities in support of student outcomes or whatever, like making those.
Or it's the same thing with the SEL stuff, okay? We said this, this, you know, it's the same thing with the, you know, with students, students' best interest is to have that guidance for the faculty and, and the students at times. Is it in their best interest? And we said yes. And we ponied up the money and asked the community and they said yes. They could've said no, we would be in different boat.
But two, I think the budget is a little different because there's a, a piece of affordability that I think it is a whole responsibility to be thinking about. But I think it's also management's job to give us their rationale for what they're presenting and.
Is it our job as non-professionals to judge the rationale in terms of what the outcomes or the ends are? Or is it more about the cost and the long range sustainability?
Well, I, so I've been tense a whole time.
You probably answered this question.
I have always said, I have never ever been comfortable saying, bring us a budget that goes up three percent more. I just don't believe in that. You know, I've always made the case for, bring us the budget that best meets the needs of the students. That is within that, that the community's account. And if we decide, you bring us, is it affordable? Then we're gonna ask you to prioritize what things that you think.
They can go down.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't measure the success of the budget, whether it passed, it's whether, whether it achieved what it said it was going to.
Right, but we don't have an effective system for doing that.
Right, no, we don't.
Did we spend the money?
Right.
That we keep track of.
Right, but we don't know whether it was effective or not.
One of the problems we have is, is too much money in this community. That's our biggest problem. Well, I, you know, I don't know about that.
Because you say that, but then if the administration came with a budget that was a six percent increase in the tax rate, but it, but it achieved everything you wanted, you'd say no.
But the last budget was a six percent increase.
And the amount raised by taxes, if it was gonna increase your tax rate by six percent.
But we said yes, we're gonna facilitate that.
The budget increase is different than the amount raised by taxes.
This is gonna happen. Um, just like the portfolio pieces that you guys are doing in the past. We said that was gonna be important, so you're gonna be doing, you got one more year to do it. Okay. But we said this was, so there's a sys, there's a board's end of the systemic thing. We said, you guys are gonna do this because we feel this is important. This is an overall direction. So superintendent said, sure, no problem.
If somebody asks us questions about that, would we respond to them or direct them to administration?
For.
Without any others, I'm trying to think about, I think our practice has been that administration is typically responsive, or I think it's more often that Martha will direct them through administration and will keep a, that budget button that has the collective Q and A's.
We have used the superintendent and the board chair as the spokespersons. So there's one voice being, as opposed to multiple voices. So there's, you know, so it's one voice. That doesn't mean that there aren't twenty sets of ears, but, you know, there's, there's two voices, that's it. And they're supposed to be, you know, essentially joined at the hip, um, when it comes to that.
And when the work is complete on the budget, I feel like the way we measure it is a task budget. But we definitely had conversation after the fact about our concern regarding turnout, regarding uncontested seats, like we've, we really probed that with interest as a board, cause we're frustrated.
Yeah, um, and our frustration was also out there with the transportation piece because it wasn't coming, um, around as we had anticipated. So who could see that people weren't going to be capable of hiring in? Um, you know, who could see that some companies are only at forty percent capacity?
No, 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 I didn't get this.
And again, if it was, if it caused a ten percent budget increase, it doesn't mean you're talking.
But I think there could be questions that are more philosophical or variant questions, which we might just discuss with the administration and try to come to consensus.
But also fellow board members as well, like, I think that.
Well, that's.
We rely, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, you know?
Right.
How many times do we ask you during a meeting, you know? Or, you know, throughout the year, you know, how is this typically done? You know, it's, there's a lot of history that. Yeah.
Okay, and we talked about this earlier. When work is complete, how is measured? And I think we both have, it's the community's book.
But I do think your point is a good one, that we wanna know how the big investments paid off.
Right, so we'll be looking for, as we have this year, we've had a couple of presentations on the SEL. And, um, I think we'll be, over time, looking for more hard data on, um, and so far. And how is this being implemented? Which is also important for us to understand.
Yeah. Right, cause there are some things, you know, now that we're sort of first, through the first phase of the merger, we're starting to hit that sort of less quantitative, uh, hope for development as a unified district is like, are we able to align curriculum? Are we able to create?
Right, but it makes as much sense to me to have two principals for the three K through five schools in the township as to have three for the two K through five schools in the town. And I think we could continue to explore how we have people not match to the number of buildings.
Yep. Yep, if the need, if the need's there, then it should be refunded.
Well, and if the goal of the SEL is referrals, then it should be less work for the principals to do.
Right.
Should be able to focus more on the things that we want principals to be doing, of like evaluating teachers and leading.
Well, remember, I went to that.
Okay, I'm gonna bring you back. So what?
Exactly.
What'd you find out? What, what struck you about that conversation?
Kind of all over the place.
Meaning what?
Just that.
In terms of people's beliefs or what?
Yes.
The process or?
Yeah, their beliefs.
Was there commonality at least? Okay?
Respect one another, but don't have consensus on the answers to the questions.
Okay, so there's some differences on how stuff may happen?
There's a lot of gray areas, there are blurred areas.
Okay.
Lack of clarity, I guess I would say.
Lack of clarity?
Yes, I thought so.
In what, in what ways? What were the, what were, what?
We seem to be in agreement around each of those
Okay.
pieces and how we see our role versus the superintendent's.
Okay.
And how we've experienced the process, I think.
Yeah.
Um, so it didn't seem quite as all over the place, maybe?
So, and, and how about this group?
We had fairly consistent consensus across all the questions. We spent a little bit more time, I think, exploring some of the, uh, specific details and what ifs, yeah.
Great, so who, who were the newest board members here? Okay, how did you learn about the budgeting process?
I haven't been through it yet, I attended some board meetings before, was on the board.
Yeah.
Some of the budget meetings, but I haven't been through it as a board member.
So if you were looking for guidance on how, what your role was in, in budgeting, where, where would you go?
I'm not sure right now.
Experienced board members, where did you go?
Martha.
Where?
Martha.
Martha, or else?
Fellow board members.
Fellow board members, okay? Here's one of the differences with policy governance, okay? I'm gonna take you through a budgeting process, answering those questions from a policy governance perspective. What I would offer is there's a lot of clarity on this board about the budget process in terms of what your role is. So there's some pretty good practices here. I will tell you that's not. I will tell you, that's not my experience a lot of times, that people do line by line review of the budget and direct the superintendent to take X amount out of this and add that and. So there's a level of oversight in the budget that is in this board that is more of a governance model than a management model. So whichever way you go, you're in a pretty good position. Here's what policy governance does. So what is the work the board does is defined in policy and it's defined in two places. The first place is the board tells the superintendent, here's the results we're gonna get. Those are the ends. I need to see a budget that reflects those ends. The board work is also to go out in the community and say, what's the affordable cost of this budget? What can the community tolerate? It doesn't mean you set a two percent, but you go out and you hear, here's what the community is saying they can take in terms of value. So you go out to the community and you get the ends by saying, here's what the community values in our students. You go out to the community and say, what's, do you think is the reasonable cost of that? That's the board's work. The superintendent's work is then defined in a policy called financial planning and management. And that outlines a whole series of things. She needs to project the cost, she needs to do a multi-year plan of budgeting, so you know if the roof is gonna be going. It requires her, if there's any change in program, that she has communicated that with the stakeholders and she has a sense of what's gonna happen, what your take is on that. You're gonna have a march of four hundred people coming to the to the board meeting in support of it. Right, we've had that happen before, okay? So her job, before she makes any program changes, is to make sure that that has been communicated to the public and she has information about that. So her job is defined in a policy, here's what she needs to do. Okay? What guides the board work? You have a set of policies in terms of your governance process that does this. Um, you get to direct the budget in terms of saying, what are the outcomes? And if you've got a monitoring report, so I'm gonna go down here to how is it, how is the work measured? What I heard many times was people say, oh, if the budget passed, that's how we measured whether it was a good budget. Right? Most of us go, oh, thank God. In policy governance, there are two measures. One is, did the budget pass? And the other is, the superintendent is required to give you an update on what are the results. And if you are looking at those results and you see an area that is not being met, you at that point direct the superintendent to say, that needs to be in the budget. So you're directing the superintendent's work through the results rather than through the management. And that's defined through the governance processes. Okay? What guides the work of the superintendent? The ends, the direction from the board in terms of the cost, in terms of the program, of the ends, and meeting the requirements of being law, she can't be unlawful, she can't be unethical, she's gotta follow all of the the criteria that are set out in policy. And I'm not gonna go into that, but that's what guides her and you know what to expect from her. When question arrives, what's the process for answering those questions? Generally speaking, it goes sort of around, you think, well, I think we could do this, or I think we could do that, or maybe we should think about this. In policy governance, there's actually a very clear process you use. And the first thing you do, and this is just a random, um, one that I put up. These are sort of rehearsal. So what you do is you would have a scenario, so you have a scenario around budget that comes up. The first one is, has the board said anything in its policy? And you look at end, remember I said it's an interrelated system? So you don't just look in one area, you're actually gonna look in four areas. So you're gonna say, what are the executive limitations, what are the board management delegations, the governance process? And then it asks the question, has this been delegated to the superintendent? If the answer is yes, you have an entirely different conversation going, all right? If it's no, then you have a different one, it's about your work as a board. So does the, one of the things that takes some of the, it's a hard process, but it gets people on the same page. Under policy governance, you do a monitoring process that requires the board and the superintendent to define what the policy means. It's called a reasonable interpretation. So all of you are coming from the same position when you talk about a policy. It isn't, I thought it meant this, or you might have thought it meant that, in a monitoring report, you put it down. So the superintendent would make her reasonable interpretation and you would ask the question, does the scenario suggest that the superintendent sits compliant with the reasonable interpretation? 'Cause here's what policy governance is different. If it's yes, and you think, oh my God, that's not what we want. You don't hold the superintendent accountable at that point, you begin to say, we need to rewrite the policy. And so the next thing you do is you review that policy and you write and put in what was missed. But the superintendent met that obligation, right? Then, the other piece is, so we always look at the superintendent, did you do what you were supposed to do? You then ask the question, is it consistent with our process? What we said we were gonna do and how we were gonna work with each other and how we were gonna work with the superintendent? So you're looking at it two levels, the superintendent responsible, if yes, did they do what they were supposed to do? If no, it's a different issue. Then you go to, are we doing what we're supposed to do? If yes, then you're okay, or do you need to do something in policy? If no, then you need to take action, which is, wait a minute. But everybody's working from the same understanding. And then what you do is you figure out, what do we do? What's the action you need to take? And then, does it involve possible policy change? What additions? So policy governance, you are looking to amend and review your policies at the same time that you're doing your monitoring schedule, which is every policy is monitored every year. So unlike my old policy manual, when I started, I had nineteen sixty-seven policies in the policy manual. And I started in eighty-seven. So this is how you begin dealing with questions. Which you automatically go back to your policies and you have the discussion. That's what policy governance is is structured around. Questions about this?
We do have a few questions.
They do have a couple of questions.
Yeah, yeah.
So I appreciate, and again, if we're still working on the the budget scenario, that's fine. I think that it might be more informative for this group to walk through a more unusual and less polished process.
Yes, we could do that. The piece that I would say, sometimes, um, what I would do is when there are questions I'd like to take you through because, um, you have a practice, I would question whether it's a polished process. Okay? Because there may be stuff that comes up and there's no, you're sort of saying, what do we do with this now? And all I'm saying is policy governance gives you structures to do that. So Patrick, you're gonna love the box. But there is just a process and what I what I do is take some questions and be able to just respond in terms of, you could certainly, how would you as a board, but I could put it in terms of policy governance, okay? So the next piece, once the work's, oh, there's another, sorry, Martha, sorry.
So, my question isn't budget related, so do you want me to save it? But it is related to the whole process you described.
So let me just finish this and then we'll come back and just open it up for questions or scenarios that you may have that we can play out, okay? So then, how do you know the work's completed? How is it measured? Two things that are there. One is a sample monitoring report. And this is what, um, Beth would be required to do, and this is, uh, financial condition, so this is day-to-day stuff. And if you look, she's certifying it's true, which is a big thing. And then you'll see there's a superintendent interpretation and then compliance. This is the broad one, but if you get down to the specific ones, she will tell you what it means to be in compliance. And then she's gotta provide evidence, this is a first draft through, so there would actually be evidence showing the data and balances of the monthly statement. So what you would have, when she does the monitoring report after the budget is done, she will tell you, here's how I complied with the budget process for you. The other piece would be her ends monitoring report. So there are two ways that you're measuring that. The other piece that is, so that's all in the superintendent's realm? In your realm, I know you've been doing, um, self-assessments, but on an annual basis, you would be looking at doing something which is very specific to, you'd do this twice. You'd do it for yourself and then you would do it for the whole board and then you prepare the two and this would be used to help you set your board goals. But you would be looking in the linkage role, policy development, monitoring, contributing to the board as a whole, following the code of conduct, board delegation, so those types of things. So policy governance has double accountability and it's outlined in policy.
Looking at that, um, monitoring report for the financial status or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, I guess I'm wondering what the effect is of certifying that something is true when it seems like a lot of the language is kind of Byzantine? Like allowing, I just, as you were scrolling through.
Yeah, yeah. You might go back to it.
The superintendent shall not allow financial jeopardy, which is defined as being in a financial deficit without board knowledge and without a plan in place.
Yeah.
Which my interpretation of English would be that if you have a plan in place, you can not have board knowledge and that statement would be true.
Okay, here's the piece that plays out in that. One of the important, probably one of the most important policies in policy governance is two point eight. It's an executive limitation which says superintendent shall not fail to keep the board informed of any time that she is out of compliance or any, and a whole list of things that she is responsible for. So if she's not told you that she is out of compliance financially.
I just feel like, looking at this and reading it, it would seem to me, oh, I have an approved plan in place to address the deficit. Therefore, we're not in financial jeopardy because this is an and statement.
Yeah.
Therefore, I don't need to tell the board about
Yeah, I think what you have to do is dig deeper.
Deficit.
Yeah.
But I'm saying that like if there's hundreds of pages of this, of monitoring reports, the chances of there being some where what the superintendent is trying to say and what the board understands it as are different.
Yeah.
That's pretty high.
Yeah, here's the piece that I would, this is the highest level of the of the policy. The way policy governance works is you have a very high level. If you are satisfied, that if the superintendent comes with that statement to you, that you believe that, you can leave it there. I know no board that leaves it there. They begin building down. So if you look at two point one, it says two point three point one, expend more funds that have been authorized in the fiscal year. The superintendent now needs to show you the data. And one of the things that this has to be, is it has to be in a form that you can read it and understand it. You then keep going, is it just about expending funds? Nope. Expend more funds than a budget, incur debt. So these are all the things that you're telling the superintendent she cannot do and she has to demonstrate to the board that she's doing them. And if she spells out of doing them, she needs to tell you at the immediate point it happens and come to you with a plan to fix it. So you don't have to wait for the monitor, you should not be waiting for the monitoring report. The monitoring report should be saying, oh, we know that, we're in okay shape, but you told us there was an issue with special ed funding back in November and here's the plan to fix it. So it digs deeper, that first comment is sort of the general piece that we're saying to you, you just, this is clear, but here are the other pieces.
Can you talk a little bit about how the monitoring reports feed into the superintendent's evaluation?
Yes. In policy governance, the superintendent's evaluation is based on compliance with the monitoring reports and achieving the ends. Some other people will add other components, but in essence, there is a schedule set up and what you're doing is every time a monitoring report comes forward, you are providing the superintendent with feedback and evaluation. You met our criteria, you didn't. If you didn't, you need to fix it, oops, this is two, oops, this isn't going okay. Other people add other elements, if you're strict policy governance, it's, that's how the superintendent's evaluation is done.
We had, in our tenure, Brenda, we had a, um, leadership characteristic type qualitative component of it that reflected, was actually sort of a tripod thing, it was like the superintendent's goals and self-assessment on that and board assessment on that and then, um, leadership characteristics. But it was a three-part thing because we would do a spreadsheet of compliance or plan to get in compliance of each of this monitoring reports that had been presented, so you sort of kept that on a running chart. And then the other components were sort of a set of questions, kind of like we had done, um, before doing Beth's evaluations that were of, um, the other skills and so.
I think the piece that that Carter would talk about is that it just shouldn't be surprises. That that the expectations are clear, so there's no need for trust because you're just being clear. And the expectations, you're not going, oh, Beth, we wanted you to do this. Or the board looking at itself and saying, here's the goals we set for ourselves, did we do them? I actually worked with the board, that I came, worked with them, came back and said, what would you celebrate that you did this year? And they looked around the room and said, we did nothing. I said, well, you did pass a budget. They were struggling. It's not necessarily, you've got twelve goals or indicators that you're doing, which is pretty ambitious. But I think that you begin.
We're down to eight.
Shorter list issue. We're not as ambitious as we thought.
Okay, the other piece, um, so that just takes any situation and gets clarity around it. The other piece, so that just takes any situation and gets clarity around it through the processes that you do. And I would offer that it takes some time to get the monitoring reports in line. When people are going into policy governance, we usually have four a year and then all eight the third year. And the board figures out how it's going to do its monitoring report too. And that can vary. Because what you don't want is the board to spend all of its time doing monitoring reports. So there are different ways you can do that.
We did a little child around that with our goals. We kind of modeled the idea of monitoring our progress on our goals.
Yeah. So what I'd like to do now is just, what other questions you have? Or is there a scenario you'd like to work through?
Yeah. I would suggest that one of the areas that we are still kind of shrugging our shoulders about is how to take issues or input that students raise. I feel like we felt pretty good about the outcomes of the conversation about the Black Lives Matter flag, but there's still things that either our student representatives bring to us or that students visiting our meetings bring up, like the, you know, hey, we should get credit for participating in sports. And like, in policy governance, how do you sift through different types of student?
So the first question I'd ask is what's, is, do you view the difference between students coming and the public coming and a parent coming?
Just me or?
Yeah, or how's the board view that?
I'll take input from anywhere.
I feel like student requests to the board have been a little more scheduled than other types of requests to the board in that we hear from somebody at the high school that, hey, there's a group of students coming and.
Yeah. Under policy governance, would that fall under governance or would it fall under management, the type of requests that they're asking?
I think it varies.
Can you give an example?
My question is kind of how to sort through, like, to me, the question of whether you receive credit for gym class for participating in a sport is not something that the board should be deciding and is a current issue and a management issue. Other people might see it differently as per sort of a big picture vision about health goals.
Yeah.
You know? But the Black Lives Matter question, I think we were informed by our lawyers that was something that simply the board had to decide because it was governing the flagpole. And so even though it was a management, current, reactive issue, it was something that by law was our responsibility.
Yeah, and I think that's where your guidance can come in. The thinking that you have is reasonable. So if I were thinking about this from policy governance, when the students came in and said, I want credit for gym class, the piece you want to do is encourage them to figure out how to get it resolved, but coming to the board is not going to get it resolved. And yet you don't want to say, go away. What you need to say is, we believe, one of our ends, and I'm just making this up, okay, is that people need to have wellbeing, that there's a health component. Here's the process we'll add, that the board takes those issues really seriously and we've set up a process for you to deal with that. And that would be that you'd go to your principal and then you'd go to the superintendent. And then, if the superintendent chooses to do that, she would inform the board. She wouldn't ask the board, she would say, students came, so it'd be in a superintendent's report, incidental, what's called incidental report. Need you to know, this is what the decision was, we will be doing X. Just need the board to know. It's not the decision on the board, it needs the board to know. Now what Beth needs to do and Martha needs to do is be aware of those legal responsibilities that you cannot necessarily delegate. So I'd give you an example. Under policy governance, generally, people take all of the old policies that they had, student personnel, those type of things, move those into administrative procedures. They keep an entirely different section, which is for state mandated policies, which you do not develop, but you have to approve. And then you have federally mandated. So on websites for people in policy governance, they have our policy governance policies. We have federal mandates, we have state policy, and then we have procedures, which are under the guise of the administration. So a lot of it is, is being able, one of the things that becomes really important is board education. So one of the things that becomes part of the development process is you take some scenarios, like the one that I had, and you just play it out. So you get used to saying, if somebody comes in and asks this request, what do we do with it? It's not a new piece, but you actually know your policies and can say, geez, that's really important to us, but here's how the board will be handling that.
Is the circle closed when like, whatever the decision is, Beth makes the link as sharing the evidence as how they arrived at the decision because it was in line with the health ends or it was in conflict with the health ends? Like, she would tell us what they're going to do. And she would say, you know, we arrived at this decision because it aligns with our ends or something.
Yeah.
Because if we're pointing them to that policy and saying, this is the process.
The piece that you've got, I would offer is a caution, is you then don't open it up and have the discussion about, well, I think you should have done this. If that is the case, then what you do is you go and you say, we need to revise our policy.
I think one of the issues for me is, this is a fairly large organization. It's now, it's 10 to 12, but we have a CTE component as well, 4,000. The timeliness of revising a policy in the middle of a budget, I don't always, I don't always feel like, how flexible is this? Can, you know, if we have different expectations in the middle of what we'd see as the superintendent's responsibilities, should we change this right now or?
No. I think what you, what I recommend is what the practice is, that you've sort of kept a running list of your monitoring.
Yeah.
And part of that running list is, here are the policies we need to revise. And you do that in a one-shot deal over the summer or whatever. You don't have to be continually bringing the policies up.
Okay.
Because otherwise, you're not seeing the whole. And you could actually make a change in one policy that's not connected to another. So you really begin saying, here's where we need to pay attention to policy. We don't immediately rewrite the policy.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense.
So I'm starting with, how prescriptive do you make the policies in the beginning? And if you don't make them prescriptive and you get a bad result, then you have to go back and rewrite them and be very prescriptive. I'm going to give you a specific example that comes from a different board that's using policy governance. And there was a principal search and it was done in a way that the board was really unhappy with how the superintendent did it. So then they went back and rewrote their policy. But in the meantime, they had a result that they weren't particularly happy with.
Because there are a bunch of responses I have. The first one is, I'm going to be pretty general. There are a set of model policies that most organizations, not just schools, most organizations uses their base. So you're not developing your policies from scratch. I have seen minor modifications made to those policies over time. All right, I'll give you one example. In the ends policy in one board's, they set a number. That did not work. So they were saying, you're going to provide these things at 1.5% of the consumer index.
Oh, gosh.
That's how exact they wanted to get. They changed that in a hurry. I've only seen some minor modifications. The other piece that I think, I would speak, I've been doing this about 10 years, 12 years. And the way we used to do policy governance, we'd come in and train the board and say, have fun. Go do it. And we were never there, we'd wait for their call when they were implementing it. And it got implemented in a variety of ways and not all of them what I would call policy governance. I think that when you're making a decision about hiring, truly under policy governance, it is the superintendent's responsibility to hire. And I think it's wise of the superintendent to get really clear what are the values that the board is looking for that manifest itself in that position because it's usually a high-profile position. But the board also is ultimately the one that has to hire them. So you've got to be able to say, if you're not happy, you're going to say no. That's the tough part. Very few boards have made a lot of changes. There are some changes that have, boards have made based on local conditions that they've had to put in to the model policies. You know, in other words, they're in a small community and the building was donated to them and there's a founder and so there's some unique things. But the next step, if you choose to go, is we'd sit down and draft a set of policies, which is simply going through the policies that are there. And then you just practice with them. You bring scenarios up and you just practice with them. But you do not implement them. You don't put them into play.
Val, when you say that, you're speaking about the executive limitations. The ends, I recall being a bigger process. It was not, and those seemed to vary more district to district.
Yeah. The ends, you put a placeholder in because the ends is really the board's work over the next piece. But you developed a set of draft, executive limitations, board management, delegation and governance processes. And you just use them, what you would put in your agenda is board education. And you'd pick at the board chair and you could pick a specific scenario. You play it out just using that process that we used. And then there's actually an answer key that you can look at. And you can begin saying, oh, yeah, this is how it works. And then you make the decision, wait a minute, this is way too structured for us. We're just going to go back the old way. Or we want to keep going. And if you wanted to keep going, then you would get very specific training around monitoring. So if I just move to the next slide here. I'm going to come back to this. But sort of next steps, it considers your interest. If no, you just keep going on your own way. If yes, you move to the next stage, which is you draft the policies. That's a pretty intensive process. Then you work with it a little bit. Then I come back and I talk about monitoring, board self-evaluation, community engagement and ends, and then the rehearsal part. So other things that come up that you may want to take a look at under this model.
One of the questions that has been thatted around in our deliberations has been, our board is too big for policy governance. And/or, our district is too complex for policy governance. Could you speak to that, those issues generally?
I'd need to know more about what, too big for policy governance?
Too many people.
Ten.
We have 10 members.
I know boards are 14. I know it's boards, it has very little to do with size, in my mind. I, I think it becomes an issue when you're in a small board and you're trying to do governance monitoring. There's a board of five and you're trying to, you're going to spend all your time, so you have to find another way. In essence, a board of 10, it's, policy governance is not size-related, it's mental belief-related. In terms of complexity, my feedback from people who get really good monitoring reports, I'm not saying people who get shoddy monitoring reports, because there's some out there, they know a lot more about the organization. And the other piece, those monitoring reports are public. And so what you do is you have your policy and then you correspondingly hook the monitoring report with it that allows the public to gain a lot more access to what's going on. So complexity, a lot of organizations are complex. I think the piece that you'll find with policy governance, they really believe it is the board as a whole versus a lot of committee work. Okay? It's the board's work as a whole to do this work. Because a lot of the committee work, and I don't, I don't know what the committee, I've looked, but I don't remember them. But let me give you an example. There are some boards that have a curriculum committee. That's in direct conflict with what you'd be asking the superintendent to do. Even a finance committee, the superintendent may put one together, but the board needs to be cautious of those things. So when I've seen board committees, it's been legislative, that we want a committee to do legislative action, or they want to keep negotiations and they keep that committee. Otherwise, it's a board of the whole. Some people say, this group's going to plan the community outreach. But there is a policy around committees and you give a very clear charge. It has a very clear duration. And it can only be on the action of the full board rather than the action of the individual committee. Yeah?
I may not explain this right, but I'm going to try to.
Sure.
Policy governance itself with all of the, you know, the monitoring and the ends and everything seems very well, like, and very explicitly laid out. If, we have instances where, say for example with no, you know, maybe through no fault of her own, you know, the superintendent falls out of compliance multiple times. You know, outside forces are at work. You know, but maybe part of her, I don't know if it's part of her contract, but if, you know, at the end of the year review, we're seeing that, you know, she's fallen out of compliance multiple times. How much leeway would we have as a board to say, you know, we really don't think that this is on her? You know, should we really be assessing a penalty for her being out of compliance for something that was not within her control? Or would we still assess her on that? And I also kind of have a follow-up question in the far opposite way.
Okay.
Say she never went out of compliance, but something completely radical happened, like, say that the kindergarten teachers were running like a toddler fight club. And we knew, and we knew that we needed to just make a fresh start with leadership. Like, this was such a drastic, horrible issue that even though generally the superintendent has done a good job, this was just something that the board needed to say, you know, we need to clear house. Like, you know, again, I'm looking at radical, you know, I, I'm trying to make a point for like very radical examples so that I can, you know, get kind of a clear response without.
So I, I'm going to turn to the rest of the board. If you took the first scenario, which was you're, the superintendent is out of compliance for issues beyond the superintendent's control, what would you be thinking as a board?
Monitoring report explaining why she's out of compliance.
Yeah. But what would that mean for her performance review?
Well, I think it depends on the severity of what actually happened. I mean, it's a judge, I think you need to think about, is that reasonable? You know, and if it was out of, clearly out of her control, then I think you, you need to give her an opportunity to either change the measuring the next time around or change the policy or the ends. Or expect that there will be a change in the continuous improvement plan going forward.
There is no, it's not black and white.
Yeah, see, I tend to zero in on these questions.
Yeah, so, so. So if I were in the superintendent was out of compliance, and let me just think this out loud, and it was because the state funding formula kept changing? And I'm just throwing that out.
Something like that.
Some idea like that. Then I, as a board member, would be saying, that's totally out of your control. We got to do something about that. And that's the board's action. I'm sure the superintendents are at it, but the board is the one that really, they begin saying, you have no control over that. We're elective people from our town. And it is driving us unable, we're unable to be, to do what we're supposed to do. So that'd be the first thing. The other piece would be. So that'd be the first thing. The other piece would be, I'd be thinking as a board member, was that really predictable?
Right.
Could you, was there foresight in that? And if there was no foresight, probably be thinking, hm.
But if there was foresight and the superintendent didn't mention it.
Yeah, then, then, then it's, then it's another issue. So I don't think it's black and white. You would not be saying, it's not a scorecard, okay? I didn't get eight policy, you know, I've got eight, nine policies that I have to monitor and you gotta get a proficient in it, which means this. You're really looking, because generally a superintendent is out of compliance in one area, not the whole policy.
Right.
And you have to think about that.
Yeah, no, that helps, because honestly, I was thinking it was very much in the other direction. That it was very, you know, you had a policy and if they were out of compliance, that was just it. You know, there was no back and forth discussion about whether or not.
No, and the superintendent needs to give you confidence that they're gonna be in compliance.
Right.
Okay?
I, I can remember encountering a situation very similar to that. And it was a job in which we were given and it had to be done in a specific timeframe. And we missed it by a mile. So we got called up on that, on the carpet on that one. And it was because the requirements kept changing and we had no control over those requirements. So once that story was made clear, then it was okay.
The piece that, the piece that becomes really, the board has this responsibility, that when the superintendent comes and says, what do you think, you need to say, sorry, you own it.
Yeah.
Because what you want, and I would offer that, there are superintendents whose belief is they are taking guidance from the board and they do the board's wishes. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. Policy governance requires a board, a superintendent to say, this is my job, I'm taking responsibility for it and I'm moving. The thing you don't wanna do, because as soon as she comes and asks you, who owns it now? You do. And what you're saying is you own the results and you own the responsibility to meet our executive limitations. If you're asking us, you're not responsible now, I am. And I'm not doing that. Yeah?
Val, I remember when we were implementing, um, policy governance in Essex Town. When we were going through the first set of monitoring reports, there was some negotiation around what qualified as acceptable evidence.
Yes.
Could you talk a little bit about that?
Um, yes. And we'd go more into that with the training.
Yeah.
But in essence, the, the superintendent owns the reasonable interpretation. What I do is I say, it makes sense for the superintendent to bring a draft of that to the board and say, here's my reasonable interpretation and here's possible data sources, all right? Before they do a whole report and the board goes, I don't take your reasonable interpretation and the data doesn't meet the need. So I ask for that, so what you saw was an example of somebody bringing that first draft. So here's my reasonable interpretation, here's possible data sources. Here's what always hap- always happens. I, it has happened all the time. And when you were under it, we didn't provide the support afterwards. We said, go forth and conquer. And so you're gonna see all of these different types of monitoring reports. Here's the guidance we give now. The superintendent has control over the evidence and the reasonable interpretation. If she's hearing from the board as a whole, as a whole. So I was at a board meeting and the poor superintendent, thirteen members of the board, thirteen people throwing data out. Oh, I think you should do this, I, I think you should do this, you know, how, what's the well pump? I was observing. And they started to move and I just said, excuse me for a minute. And I turned to the superintendent and I said, do you know what data you're supposed to collect? He says, well, I got a list. That's the issue, the board works as a whole, so if people are putting stuff out, the board as a whole needs to say that, let's add that. But there needs to be, because people have different levels of grain size that they wanna see. And so it's the board making the determination, not individuals throwing their pet, piece out.
Val, I have a couple of questions from Andre. One I think you touched on earlier, but I think it would be helpful if you went through this. And that is, how does a policy governance board deal with complaints?
Okay. How do you think a policy governance board would deal with complaints?
Same way we do.
Which is what?
Well, we send it back. So somebody complains to me about a teacher. How, first question is, did you talk to the teacher? Not happy with the answer? Did you put it in writing and bring it to the principal? If you've done that and you're still unhappy, bring it in writing to the superintendent. If you're still not happy, then it can come to the board. And that may be different in policy. I mean, I can't think of anything that's come to the board using that policy in forever.
And I think you have a policy which becomes your procedure. What becomes, I, I think the most important piece is if that's been your practice, then that's what the community expects. What I find in some communities is I complain to the school board and it's brought up in a school board meeting and it's taken care of. Which then says, you're violating their policy, number one. Number two, you might as well just run the school, because they're never gonna go back to the su- the teacher or the superintendent to deal with it. So if you've got a policy already, under policy governance, Beth would be expected to implement that procedure and provide that information to all of the, so there's actually treatment of students, guardians, families. And in that is a, a clear thing that she shall not fail to let people know how to complain. Okay? What I see is missing many times is the board's ability to deal with the public in a caring, important way that doesn't say, that's not mine. But to be able to, to do some training that tells to board members, when a parent complains to you, here's how you can respond. That's really important to us and here's how we've described how you're gonna take care of it. And somebody can always come to the board and complain. The issue is, what's the board gonna do with it?
Exactly, yeah.
I'm thinking about that policy about treatment of students and parents and stuff. We've talked a lot as a board about equity.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about how policies that are essentially proscriptive, are you saying thou shalt not do X, ensure that the superintendent does make Y happen equally for students of different backgrounds? Like, are there places in policy governance where people usually add statements about equity or?
It's, it's generally what, what you're doing is, is doing it in the component of fail to ensure all students have access or all students are achieving or, so the executive limitations are written in the negative, because what you wanna do, it's very hard to say, here are all the things you can do, Beth. All right? Just, it can't be done. What you're doing is saying, here's the things we are not gonna tolerate if you go outside of these. So there are people that are building those equity elements in two areas, being very explicit in the ends and in terms of treatment of students and programs and assets, those types of things.
One area where I'm a little bit concerned about, especially when it gets into data and student performance and that sort of thing. K to eight, and there seems to be difficulty in some of the other areas like nine through twelve or in CTE. You know, we're dealing with multiple, and there are a lot of reasons for it. Structure, the way classes are taught, there are a lot of differences. I'm just not sure about how the ends, how we monitor all these different ends and pull this all together. Because it's, it's, well, that's okay, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and here's, here's a couple of perspectives that I have. One is it takes some time to develop ends in a way that makes meaning. But one of the things, remember I said, policy governance is a system? One of the things that policy governance does is then gives Beth the authority to go to a teacher and say, this is what we're doing. This is what the board has decided based on the community and we're gonna be developing a system to report out on that. So it isn't individual teacher choice of, well, I'm not covering that piece. It really provo- I've seen it happen in a number of high schools, that all of a sudden they're now being driven by having to report out on board ends. And that's public and it's yearly. Here's the, here's the rub. Many, many of the academic ends, you have some proxies for. The non-academic, there are no systems in place that really go do good data, so it's gonna take some time for the school to develop those. I think there's more of an effort to do that now, but the idea of, of well, you know, physical well-being, it's not judged by how many kids take phys ed. And the other piece that I would say is you'll find that the ends monitoring report gets more and more sophisticated as the system gets better.
One other follow-up question.
Yeah.
We've had a, we've had a lot of feedback and discussion off and on now about staff morale and surveying staff.
Yeah.
And determining climate. Well, the state hasn't come up with one, so we can't give one. But if the board wants to have a climate survey, they're gonna, there really has to be some sort of genetic, generic kinds of surveys where we can get that feedback.
Yeah, and I think the piece that, under policy governance, the board would not get it. You have a specific policy that's treatment of staff. And there are a set of things that the superintendent shall not, and one of them deals with what's sort of, making sure that there are all sorts of things in place and it would be her responsibility to figure out, how do I determine and provide the board the information around that? So it would not be the board's responsibility to do that, that would be the superintendent's.
Okay, so.
On the treatment of student staff.
So let's take a scenario. Superintendent decides that she will wait for the state and the state never delivers. Is, is there timeframes that can be built into that?
I think the piece you have to do is look at your policy and if she has some other, the piece, there are ways to measure staff satisfaction that may, may be associated. I think you look at retention rates, I think you look at all sorts of stuff. You look at grievances. There, there are all sorts of data that you're looking for the trend, which way is it going?
I think we've ever had any on staff that I recall, but we do in different areas, but not in staff.
Yeah, and I think there is, that would be something that when she's doing that monitoring report, you'd have a conversation, here's the evidence that I would produce and she'd be responsible for that.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
So I can see very much how policy governance would change the terms in which we conduct our work as a board and the terms in which Beth and the people who work directly for her conduct their work. But if you're talking about this having an impact on like teachers, like describing how the board is really focused on these ends, how much does policy governance permeate into like, do we need to know that we have buy-in from all the principals? Or will this not really change the picture for people in the buildings?
I would, would ask, what's the relationship you have with principals now?
We're not supposed to, but Beth works with them closely, so.
Yeah, so it's not, it's, it's not gonna be a big deal. I would tell you there are boards that the superintendent and principal sit as co-equals at the table. And when they move to policy governance, it's a big change. So the piece that you're really looking at is, it may not influence teachers directly from the board perspective. It will influence teachers directly from Beth's authority to say, I've got it, this is what the board's interested in and this is what the board's gonna be looking at. And the piece that I'd say is that schools that are in policy governance, there's sort of a continuous process, they're not change-changing direction. That what you've done is set it, most people have set a pretty solid set of ends and they've tweaked it a little bit. But it allows the system to work over time, to work on those things rather than, this year it's literacy, this year, oops, this year it's this, this year it's that. So in, in terms of teachers, um, what I would offer, the skill of the superintendent in running the organization has more to do with teacher satisfaction than what the governance model is, unless the governance model is, the board is directing teachers.
Yeah.
In my, in my experience. So if the board is working through the superintendent, I don't see a lot of change for teachers. If the board is working directly with teachers and directing teachers, it's a big change.
Can, can you have your, your lecture? Do you still have something?
No, I was, I was just looking to, I was looking at another sample policy on like treatment of staff and Winuski says operate without written personnel rules. Like, there are other indicators that are articulated in the subparts of the policy that would be able to be reported on even in the absence of a climate survey, for instance. And that's, you know, they provide an interpretation and then the evidence and then the evidence, some of it's qualitative, some of it's quantitative depending on the components of it. But it addresses several different areas that are important in that treatment of staff. And I, I think in terms of permeating, or at least in what we experienced, it was that, taking vision one step down to what it is that we're looking, what would it look like if students were achieving our vision? What would they, no one be able to do? And those were articulated in the ends. And then the data we received was in the context of evidence towards achievement or progress on those ends, which was really progress on the vision. So it, it very much so connected. And I think discreet data points weren't what we were getting, nor do I think it was what teachers were looking for. I think they could look to understand the picture by virtue of the articulation of the ends, what they were sort of seeking in the exercises they were doing within their curriculum. How would they want kids to demonstrate that? I, it was the way it felt as we got more mature as a district in it.
Yeah, and I think the more you're moving from proficient towards proficiencies, those became more aligned than four credits of English, four credits of math, three credits of this, et cetera. So that does, it tells you what they've taken for coursework, but it doesn't show you the results and performance. So it, it, and it is a process that's gonna take time.
Have you had any other boards that have done this with student reps involved, like making this switch over? I'm actually, Tilly's speaking specifically with you, since you're on board for the next two years. You would be really involved in this process and also for end statements when we're talking about, what are our graduating students going to look like? I mean, you know, you're sitting literally right here at the table. So like, a- as far as involvement in that process, like, have you seen boards like, draw a lot of information from student reps who have been sitting around there or have you not seen much of that at all? I know that we've, you know, talked or, and seen around the state that student reps have wildly different levels of involvement. So I, I like to think, ours I think are really very closely involved in almost all the work that we do.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I think there's a, there's an issue of, of student involvement that, that you have a very specific stakeholder group with, with you being the student rep, that you could be turning to that student and saying, here's, here's input that Beth needs or Beth can go to you or, and she is no different than any other board member, but her constituents are different. So there's not a different expectation. The piece that you have to be cautious of is, what do you think the students think? Which is what a lot of boards will do. And it's the same behavior that I see boards say, this is what parents think. Well, it happens to be the parents that were in the event. Well, it happens to be the parents that were in the event that they were at. Nobody's gone around and asked anybody other parents. So what your work is, is how do you go out and get representative input? Rather than the passive, I happen to be at a cocktail party and fifteen people came up to me and said this, or I happen to be at this club, or at this table in a cafeteria. It's a planned process rather than a random process.
Kim.
Have you been, I can't remember Val, if you were at the V S B A conference in the conversation around Portrait of a Graduate? And that work is happening in a few different places, I think, or at least has been whatever district is Woodstock High School, that district has gone, or well down the path of engagement in Portrait of a Graduate. That language feels less jargony than ends.
Absolutely.
But could, could that be the framework of developing ends, or whatever we would call them?
These, this is the policy governance model. You'll notice, you never see me using the word owner, which is policy governance model, language. You are very clear, you're about the communities. And I'm using community broadly, that you've got three communities here. So when you go out to do community engagement, frame it in a way that's accessible. Just know that it, it's your, the language in the, in the model-
Our policies that are reflecting that portrait, which are really ends, or whatever, however we monitor it. It can coexist in that lens.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Val, thank you so much.
Well, thanks. First of all, just thank you.
I love that.
Thanks for your time, you've got a lot on your plate, and just, also just thanks for being a board member. Kids are important, and it only happens because of the work you're doing. So thanks for the opportunity, thanks Val.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we're going to move on to the student report. I'm going to ask, do we know where Laura is?
She said she couldn't make it to this meeting, but she just let me know right before the meeting, so I don't know much about it.
Okay. So I guess it's on you then.
Yeah, so we've been focusing on getting in touch with the middle schools particularly, and so we want to go into the middle schools and have a conversation with the students in those schools. So our first step is, or now, we've met, we went to the principals' meeting, the leadership meeting, and we had a conversation with them. And they were pretty responsive, but they had some concerns, so then Laura and I and Beth are going to meet with the middle school principals next week, I believe, and then have a conversation about what they want the scripts to kind of be about when we go into their schools, what we want to do when we go into the schools, and just have that conversation to make sure they're comfortable with what's going on, but we still get to do what we want, what we need to do. And so, yeah, that's where we're at right now, but, yeah, that's it.
Sounds good. Good luck. Look, look forward to hearing how that goes once you can actually get there. Anything else for us at this point? Okay, great. Questions for Tilly? All right. So, next, at our next regular meeting, so we have a meeting, well, we have pies and pie charts on Thursday. Next Tuesday is our first budget meeting, which is just going to be around budget guidance. So on the seventeenth, we're going to invite our legislators to come again. When, at our agenda planning meeting, we talked about having them come at six fifteen for fifteen minutes of cheese and crackers and casual conversation. And then planning for probably an hour. I think it worked pretty well the way we did it last year. And stop me if I'm not remembering this correctly. But I think what we did was prepared a list of topics that we wanted them to be thinking about. And we divided those up a little bit, and we talked about each of the topics. I think we gave them a list. And then we went around and asked each person to talk about whatever pieces they wanted to. My experience with legislators is, well, this is on camera, but I think if we brought up a topic, and we tried to go around the table about that topic, an hour would be gone. So I think the way we did it last time allowed us to put all our topics on the table. And then let people respond, particularly about the things they have interest in or have worked on. So, um, we started to develop a list. But I'd like to hear from board members if they have other things, so. And Pat, and Kim, and Beth, and Brian helped me out. We have on our list, obviously, election of board members, because the law that got passed will be sunsetting after this election. And it sounds like the A O E is not going to rewrite the unified union statutes, which is why it had a sunset, it was going to go become part of that. So that's, that's highest priority we need to take care of. Other topics that we talked about were special ed and the whole issue of the back and forth between the agency of education and the committee that's supposed to be working on this, and some of the things that A O E were going to do that they didn't do, but I think the big thing is how are we going to be sure that the rules are done carefully and that we're not put in a bad place going into a new funding formula? I think we want to talk about the A O E in general and the lack of responsiveness that we're not alone in experiencing. The fact that last year we had how many iterations of equalized pupils, maybe in the teens, I think. So, um, that will be something to talk about. I think we want to talk about tech. So the other, do we come up with any other topics?
There are a list of things that keep sliding from year to year to year to year. We've had some of them with technology, databases, state.
So this is back, back to A O E, like the chart of accounts?
Chart of accounts.
The common financial software, the climate survey, yeah.
It goes on.
Right, okay. Other topics, Brendan?
Uh, statewide teacher healthcare contract?
Right, it's a big-
What do you want to talk about, about that? So it will have been announced two days prior to that.
Okay.
So then-
I'm sure there will be something.
Yes, so it's probably, we should put it on the list. Maybe we won't have anything specific to say, maybe we will.
But maybe even encouragement of consideration for anything legislative that might be tweaks to the law of learn from this process.
Right, that's true, Kim.
Fight enough to be open to, um, these are only two-year contracts, I think.
Right.
I, I was surprised that the, there is such a lag in communication when things are not being delivered. When they're promised any number of those subjects. But it takes forever, and like, it's only when we reach a critical mass point we ask the question, oh, we're not going to do it for another two years. Well, you know, it's communications in general.
With A O E?
Yes.
Yeah.
I do think still the Act one sixty-six issues with the pre-K and the equity issues that that continues, and the access of special ed through that.
Okay.
The waiting study, I think-
With one, Act one seventy-three?
When, uh, the waiting study, Tammy-
No, it's separate.
Oh.
Equalizing, I think, did, I, the, she is not, um, oh, the waiting, waiting, the-
Waiting for what?
Equalized people waiting study, um, was commissioned by the legislature, so it, that report, I think, won't have been released before even, I don't believe, the state board of ed meeting. I think it goes to the legislature in the very beginning, January, December.
They usually do January first, so I don't know what we would say about that.
I don't know that they'll have much to say, except that I wondered if it were to be revealing, and in what way, do they anticipate, almost asking them, what do they anticipate that to impact their work?
Well, also, and I was bringing up the relationship between that waiting study, waiting study, and the impact of Act one seventy-three, and what's that going to do to that?
Right, that's a, um,
We also-
And I think, um, on the waiting study, we should encourage folks to get information from us about our reaction to it when it comes out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah.
I also wonder about the increase in mental health services that we end up paying for as a school district, and how's that? They just, we keep paying more and more. We should be working as a system, an entire.
So that comes back to that whole issue that we talked about at the S B A, about the interaction between education and social services, how much of what maybe should be social services falls on school districts. Anything? That's a pretty big list, Tilly.
Um, just since I think we only do this conversation once a year, kind of looking ahead to the end of the session in twenty twenty. I, or I don't remember how the seasons work, but just that these same people will be representing us in twenty twenty, and then there'll be like the gubernatorial election. And in twenty eighteen, all sorts of crazy things were done to funding at the last minute because of presumably the governor's priorities, just if there's any way for the legislature to get information about what sort of crazy things are going to happen after we've already passed our budgets.
Yeah.
And let us know in advance. That would be
Yeah.
helpful to our successful performance.
Well, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, uh, yeah, I can figure out a way to talk about that. Anything else?
The long-range facility committee, you probably mentioned it in their update.
Oh, construction fee. Oh, absolutely.
How long is this meeting with them?
Will we, do I remember, Martha, and you, I apologize if you said it, that we will be sending them sort of a the set of kind of questions or topics that we want to, um-
We didn't send them in advance, but we had it printed out. So as we talked about each one, they could make some notes, and then they could, yeah. Anything else, Sandra?
I just want to know, um, uh, will there be an opportunity for the public to have engagement before the meeting, like when the meeting starts, um, the legislators and to the board?
Well, there will be the opening piece. There'll be the community to be heard before we start our discussion with them. So that would be an opportunity. Community members are also welcome to that first fifteen minutes of socialization. And that would be talking individually to folks. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Anything else? Okay, so we'll work on the list and work on who's going to talk about each of these areas. I think it'll be probably divided up between Kim, Brian, and Beth and me, unless somebody else specifically wants to take a lead on one of these. Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Any other last-minute comments about that? Okay, testing updates. I don't think we have anything, right?
Say something about communications.
Oh, yeah, right, sorry.
And Thursday.
Yeah, I hope everyone is looking forward to Thursday. I feel like we had a lot of good momentum for this event, and some of it was lost by having a snow day interfere, unfortunately, so I hope all of you still have your good recipes, or don't mind getting an additional pie. Nothing will go to waste this time, because Essex Eats Out would be able to take any leftover pies on Friday. So let's bring as many pies as possible, and get people who you know who like to make pies to bring them. Compete, listen, please bring people to enjoy and listen. If you have any questions about how you can still get involved, there's the spreadsheet going around that Liz had sent out about ways to get involved during the meeting or before or after the meeting. Does anyone have any questions? I guess I will be the one communications and engagement team member at the meeting, because Pat, you have work on Thursday nights, right? And then Liz may or may not get back on a flight in time to-
If her flight does what it's supposed to do, she'll be here.
But this is Burlington in the winter. The chances of that are not great, so. Kim and Tilly have agreed to help facilitate. Anyone have questions today?
All, all the paperwork I need to sign people in is going to be available? Because, I mean, I think I can do it by myself. I mean, initially you had three people, but there's only me signed up.
I'll make sure. I've been in touch with Ben about various pieces of paper we would need. If you think of anything, though, that would be needed, besides name tags and codes.
It would be lovely to have a rush, I guess.
Yeah.
Then I'll help you out. I'm bringing two student constituents who can be put to work in any way that is appropriate for third and fourth graders.
Okay, I, thank you, and thanks for all the work you've put into this. It's incredible. So. Um, I've, um, Beth just reminded me that the indicators testing did meet. It was a while ago now. In your board notes was an outline of what we worked on and what would be reported out each month. Did anyone, after reviewing that, did anyone have any questions or comments or things that you would like to see different?
It's, I could just add, it, it's a fairly comprehensive document. It's a step in the right direction in my, in my judgment. There were some very specific things that were discussed and that just, just for the board, just maybe down in the weeds a little- There were some very specific things that were discussed, uh, and that just, just for the board, just maybe down in the weeds a little bit. One of the things that's pretty difficult with a lot of the data, it's finding out the differences between Excel proficient in this particular subject and not proficient. And in that not proficient area, uh, it's important to zero in on a couple of things, the percentage of students that were affected and the actual number of students. And also those numbers of students that are at the margin of becoming not proficient, too proficient. And having that data is really valuable because it points out just how much little extra effort or different emphasis could have made a, a big change in the results. So, uh, I think overall, um, at the beginning, it, in personal observation is some of the results, even though they're staggered at different times, you know, yearly, bi-yearly, quarterly, the board input on this particular subject is really important because there, there may be emphasis, critical areas like K to five or reading, where the board would like to see a little bit more frequency in those result feedback. And it includes not only S-BAC but also some local data, really important. So hats off to Beth and especially also Jackie Lamphier, or Jackie.
Tolman.
Tolman, that's right. For the, uh, the presentation and the feedback and the, it was really appreciated, so thank you.
You mentioned that there was something in the meeting documents about it, about the indicators, I can't find it.
It looks like this printed.
It was a calendar.
The name didn't make any sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right.
There you go.
Kim?
Looking at March, it, I was just struck by how many different formats for information our parents have to travel through. Cause K-five is one format, six, eight another, and, and nine twelve yet another, so. Just more an observation and wondering if there's a point at which parents have a platform that stays the same the whole time? That's fed by other tools, if that's the way we're to go. I, I don't know if any of those do all, you know, K to twelve? Or why there's so many?
Oh, it's jump rope, so we have moved, we chose not to move to jump from, away from jump rope when we moved to an Alpine system for reporting. Unfortunately, they waited and that was a good way. We moved K to five into our Alpine, Alpine's no longer using a reporting system. So K-five has gone to Power School, which is the same as high school, but they've done a better job. Power School is now represents standards, so our jump rope can eventually move to that as well. But moving, so yes, down the road, it will be one system and it will be through Power School, it will look different probably. So they won't look exactly alike, nor should a first grade report card look like a senior.
Certainly, but the platform that they would log into.
Yes, it should be the same system, um, it's not a good idea to move a whole system all at once, um, with training. So, and you also to move away from jump rope when the proficiencies and some of that standard work still had to continue. It was better to do it in the one system that they were familiar with, especially when they were reporting on newer standards. That's one hump to get over, not having both a new system and standards that you're not used to.
So if you haven't had a chance to spend time with the data, I would encourage you to do so. And if you have any thoughts or questions, please share them with me. And, you know, we can talk about it again on the seventeenth if we need to, Diane.
Is, is there any parameters here dealing with progress for technical education? Cause I'm not seeing, all of this seems to be K-12, I'm not seeing anything here that tells me about the progress of technical education. Are there parameters that, that we should be examining?
Well, right now, the prof, um, the PLPs and things like that would tap into the CTE program. But our measurable outcomes, there's nothing around that right now to then report out. So what you're seeing is the measurable outcomes with our continuous improvement plan. That continuous improvement plan, we say, you know, with professional learning communities and our academic around reading and mathematics, but doesn't really, they don't fall under those same state guidelines with a continuous improvement plan. Even though they do the professional development with us and they're with us, now they're doing proficiencies and they are doing amazing work with transferable skills and all that. When they set that system, it's not ready yet, but they're really working hard on that, I can show you that data, but it's not part of this that is correct.
Okay, cause I, I.
Their reporting system is different, they're reporting back to twelve schools or how many schools feed in, so it's, it's different.
And I think Diane, I think Diane's right, we should consider adding a CTE component.
Okay.
To our reporting system.
At, at some.
If other board members agree.
Because there, as more students, at the, the state, um, at the state meeting than we were just at, I mean, there was discussion about having technical education go nine, twelve. So I'm, I'm kinda looking in the floor and going, okay, if it's really gonna be nine, twelve, not just ten, twelve, or even eleven, twelve. Shouldn't we be also looking at the progress of students that are under our care?
I think we, I think we focus in on the progress of our programs, the students stayed back at their school for S-BACs and so there, there's some data that, that's unique. Because it's a unique program, but you know, the reporting that Bob has done in the past of number of students who have industry credentials, number of students that have placement, number of students. Those really start to measure the value impact of the programs that we do here.
And that's the kind, I think that's, that's the kind of data that we could add. I don't think you add CTE into something like S-BAC, but I think you're right, Diane, that we shouldn't completely ignore that area of responsibility. As we're looking at indicators.
Perhaps it's just putting on the calendar map where we get Bob's CTE.
Yeah.
Report, so that it's.
We get it around budget time, so, yeah.
Enrollment data, um, underrepresented population enrollment data, some of the things that we do try to push, good to measure.
That he fairly recently did with us.
Yeah.
Less specific to those measures, but more about credentials and I think all of that is the picture that if there are timely occasions where that fits in this calendar. To identify it would be great.
Yeah, good point, yeah, thanks. Okay, um, I'm gonna keep moving us along. Oh, I'm sorry, Todd.
Some long, um, range facility.
Oh, thank you.
Couple weeks ago, and the focus of it was Brian shared what he had learned from the VSB A annual meeting or whatever. Listening to other schools who are going through or in the midst of that process and because of what he learned, he sort of recommended that maybe we take a slightly different approach. The first being that maybe we should have invite in, the full board to invite in superintendent or chair or both of the school that's going through that process. South Burlington, Addison were two that he had mentioned. One was also, you know, discussing the, um, school's construction aid for the legislature, which we already discussed. In that perhaps, um, we should, for the RFP that we're about to issue, we should really limit, probably limit that to, uh, an assessment of the, the school commission of the schools and codes. And see where that lands us and then based on what we hear from the superintendent or the, you know, whoever we might hear to hear about their process, we might wanna reconsider, um, our approach moving forward. Which is probably gonna be based on, um, what Brian heard, more of a full board involvement than necessarily a task team in that. We should also probably contract a consultant to do some demographic and enrollment projections. So I don't know, I guess it would be up to the agenda planning committee to look at inviting in or when to invite in representatives from another school district that's in the process.
A question for that committee, um, if, do you intend or do you have any plans on coming up with like anything long-term for the Saxon Hill property? I'm only mentioning it because the town was looking at their long-term plans for Allen Saxon Hill. And I mentioned that we had just put together the, you know, committee to look at like our long-range, what we're doing for, you know, our properties. So they've kind of put into their plan that we're in the process of examining that. So that would be something that over the next year, like there's no obviously rush, but, um, you know, they'd like to, uh, get some word about, you know, whether or not we have any specific plans to do anything with that property up there.
Questions for Todd? Okay, well, that was a lot of testing reports when I thought there were none. Okay, local and statewide updates, um, several of us went to the VSB A conference, it was excellent. So we haven't done any pre-meeting strategizing about who might talk about what. But maybe, Kim, you can lead us off and we'll go to each person who was there and, um, see. Let's try not to repeat, but try to give the board a flavor of some of the discussions we had.
Okay, I'll leave portrait of a graduate for somebody else, but I just wanted to share, um, that Laura was invited to sit on a student panel for, um, student board member and voice. And, um, the student who's on the State Board of Ed, one of them was on that and a, a student from the Montpelier area and a student from the Middlebury area or Addison County area. And it was really interesting to hear from them their experiences and their range on those experiences, I think that they appreciated, um, having the opportunity to network among themselves as well. And to identify things that are working for them and maybe other areas where they've seen challenges. And it brought to the fore, I think, a conversation with Susan at the VSB A about perhaps revisiting a guide to support student voice on boards. Because that is quite dated, that resource that the VSB A had from many years ago when Harry Frank was doing that work. And I think, again, having even those four student board members start to make some connections and think about how they can share best practices or at least as they experience them. And, um, ways to support the work they're doing and improve their experiences on the board. I think, um, they spoke of the value of having, you know, a part, like an adult partner on the board, a mentor piece of it. So even though I know Liz and I have been working to get better at doing that each year, um, there are some boards for whom that's not the case. And I think that's something I think also could be valuable to any new board member I got thinking as I was sitting there. So I really appreciated seeing the students share their experiences, imagine that there might be a systemic look at how to support that work. And then to think about how it might translate to what we do to support new board members of all ages, so. And Laura did a great job.
Oh, she did do a great job and, um, I don't feel like I heard anything that made me say, ah, we could be doing that. And I did hear some, not as bad as maybe it used to be where someone talked about having been a student member on the board. And their job was to report the scores of the latest athletic events. So I think we've come a long way since then, um, but I, yeah, I feel like the directions we are going in are, are good directions. Even though we're stumbling a bit to get to where we wanna be, yeah, Diane?
Well, I, I attended the, uh, facilities workshop and yeah, just the listen in as to what to, Addison went through to see if there was something that we have, haven't interacted. Cause it was, I wanted to go for the community interaction piece and I was going, well, we've already done all those community act, interaction pieces. You know, not to say that we can't do more, um, but it was interesting to see how they went through because they were dealing with, um, uh, decreasing population and downsizing a school and, and that turmoil of doing all that. So it was interesting hearing how they did or didn't deal with it and it was the perspective of a superintendent and a architect and somebody else. So it was, and then there was another group that, that they happened to be in the session I was in that had indeed downsized their school. In fact, they had just been, I forget which group it was, but they were in the news, uh, that week and they were sitting next to me. And it was distracting and that they were more talking about what they were experiencing and forgetting the rest of us. So, oh, and then, then the, the person who was leading it said, well, why don't you share with us? Nice school teacher, sort of person saying, okay, you're having, you're having a chat in, in class, how about sharing? And so, so we got into an interesting sort of discussion that I don't think would occur in the, in the other, the workshop ran twice. But I think it would be to our advantage to, indeed, as, as Todd had mentioned, to have, have the discussion. I know that South Burlington wants to redo their, all of their schools. And that in itself, I think, would be an interesting discussion, just to see how they're, they've been doing their facilities committee for the last, um, when did we start that discussion with governance? Uh, you know, at least the last year, uh, that they've been, or more that they've been doing that. But it was nice dealing and, and chatting chats with colleagues and stuff about random stuff, you know, and.
Uh, Andre and I went to the fiscal, like reading, uh, fiscal and like charts and accounts. And actually, we did not get more than halfway through their slides because she, they started taking questions from the audience, which brought up a much broader question about onboarding new board members and introducing them to, you know, basically accounting charts, which is certainly I, something I'd never read before coming on to a school board. And even now, like some of the basics, like it's just never anything I learned, so, you know, I've had some excellent teachers in having someone who can explain it by and large. But still, you know, some things escape me just because I'm not familiar with, you know, what parentheses in one column necessarily means, you know, as an indicator. Or, you know, when running a deficit during like, you know, the first quarter might be normal, um, you know, or might be a sign that something's wildly out of whack. So they talked a, a good bit, um, with the SBA about how they think there needs to be a better plan for, you know, getting new board members. You know, to kind of have that just basic fiscal like knowledge because it's so important and something that comes up repeatedly through the year. That, you know, we should all be able to, you know, at least have a basic cursory knowledge of how to read those. And VSB A's, uh, you know, their ability to put those classes that they do online, um, which, you know, I always see the notifications for. But honestly, like it never occurred to me that I should probably be. But honestly, like it never occurred to me that I should probably be checking in and, you know, maybe getting a heads up on that. But, you know, like really, it's probably a good idea for me to, you know, be doing.
Well, in fact, I think Thursday, and they changed the time from noon to one, is a webinar on reading financial statements. So timeline.
Yeah.
Um, Brian?
Um, so I attended the long-range facility one. Um, but I also attended one that was about HIPAA, FERPA and digital security. Um, and it's quite a movement with terms of service with regards to apps and software. And, um, got a primer on that. And then the district also sent, uh, five staff members down to another longer training on it. So it's something that is, uh, pretty much sweeping the nation, this need to kind of grab in and aggregate terms of service and get into kind of master agreements in which they're reciprocal agreements so that people have to sign on to this and it becomes a vendor selection process. So it's pretty interesting.
Beth?
I think the only one to add to that I had gone to is a proficiency one. Um, and Harwood High School presented, they're far into it and it, um, have a really good system, but also acknowledged, and it was nice to know that there's many different ways that you enter that proficiency work. And it depends on what level you're at, but they're pretty high functioning with it and have been for a while. Um, they had a teacher and a principal, um, or an assistant principal present. And they, they did a great job. Um, really good questions from board members about proficiency based.
So no one's talked about Portrait of a Graduate.
That's the other one I went to.
Which was really the focus of the meeting. And, um, I would encourage you to go online and Google Portrait of a Graduate. It is a process that a district can go through with their community to look at what, um, skills, um, and knowledge students are gonna need for the jobs that are gonna be available in the future. And this, um, district issue, I guess, in maybe it's in the five district that is Woodstock and the surrounding towns had clearly done a fabulous job of doing this. So we heard a presentation from a national expert. And then we went to a breakout session with a Vermont district that had actually worked on this. And, um, it's very, very powerful. And we, I have feeling we'll be talking about it more. Um, one of the things they did was to show a clip about the future, um, and future jobs. And the whole clip had not a single person doing anything. It was trucks and cars being automatically driven and robots picking packages. Um, it, frankly, was frightening to me. But I think it's a, it was, it's a good way to get people to start thinking beyond day-to-day about what the world is gonna look like. Um, so it's a really powerful program of engaging the community and developing the portrait of what you want your graduates to be. And then a wonderful thing that happened, um, the last day was that a coral group from Woodstock came and did, what's that, what's it called?
Speak, speak course.
Speak course, did a speak course about Portrait of a Graduate. But it also was talking about the world as it is right now. It was incredible, as student presentations always are.
Patrick, can I, can I just share that, the, what I shared with the long-range facility committee? Is coming off a Portrait of a Graduate, understanding that we have some decision point with regards to ends policies, that it's part of my recommendation to long-range is that, you know, I thi- I think we don't want to start to imagine what our schools should look like until we understand what we want our graduates to have, to know and to learn. And, and that's why I think, you know, we, we may just be in a position of evolving knowledge and tells us that we need to slow down and speed up other work.
Okay, anything else under local and statewide updates?
Yeah. Um, so I haven't brought this up before, but I think it's starting to get close to that time. Um, you know, the select board and the trustees are obviously deep in merger talk. Um, and part of that discussion is how they're going to be forming, um, representatives going forward, assuming any merger vote passes, which is obviously still a big assumption. But I think it's going to be smart for us to consider because I was thinking about it and I'm not sure whether or not this would impact us at all. But if we separate out into wards, like whether they be four or five wards and Essex as a town gets split up and there's no more Village of Essex Junction anymore, how is that going to impact how this board gets formed and how representatives are chosen? Because we may not necessarily have those old lines anymore that we've been pulling from very easily. We may not have, you know, just the Village of Essex Junction voting anymore because that won't exist as a voting entity. Um, so I don't know how much we need to start considering that as a possibility. Um, you know, again, if the merger vote doesn't pass, then it's not something we need to consider. But, you know, since it's less than a year to that vote, I think we do need to consider the possibility that if it does, we need to have or at least start talking about a plan for, you know, how we're going to be selecting representatives for our board going forward.
So let's, um, let's put this on a future agenda. I'm not sure it'll be in your term, maybe in the spring. I know where Keely's gonna go, maybe. Uh, well, I'm just thinking that you were a proponent of at-large, um, voting. Um, although there's what you can do a hybrid, which still would have people coming from a community. So, but I think we should try to save the discussion because we should get out of here soon.
Yeah.
Um, but start thinking about it, right?
That's right, that's what I thought.
What?
It's future thinking, he's doing policy go.
That's right.
Yeah, better to think of it now than, you know, be rushing around in August.
Yeah, so we'll definitely do that. Um, anything else under local and statewide updates? Okay, we'll take a minute to do a meeting evaluation. A reminder again, Thursday is pie and pie charts. Next Tuesday is, um, the budget guidance meeting. And on the seventeenth is our second December regular board meeting. If you have any agenda items, um, please contact me. And I want to remind you again that the transportation report and the quarterly financials were in our meeting materials. If you have questions about either of those that you want relayed to the administration to be answered, please send them to me.
I did have, uh, some input on the, uh, community engagement initiatives. Uh, there was a article that I was sharing. And I was wondering if we were going to be doing anything along those lines or something else.
Besides pies and pie charts. Um, I mean, pies and pie charts is community engagement on the budget. So, yes, Al gave me, gave us, um, an article from the Williston Observer that talked about some of the ways that Champlain Valley engages the community around their budget. I sent to, an email to the chair of their board to ask her about, about what level of participation they got with those ideas. And I haven't heard back from her. So I'm gonna email her again. And I talked to Kim tonight because she knows a member of that board. If I don't hear back from Lynn within a couple of days, then Kim is gonna reach out to call me. So I am pursuing it out.
Yeah, it, it, it looked, if I could just add, it looked fairly good because there were three components of the article. It was an education piece about what education budgeting is all about. It invited the community to directly respond with feedback as to any budget concerns that they may have. And it also invited the public specific, uh, with specific dates about when each component of the budget was being discussed. So if someone was interested in an aspect of, of, uh, the budget, like special ed or- or plant or whatever, uh, they could participate and have a specific date when it would be, you know, discussed. So it looked-
So our, yeah, our, just as a reminder, our calendar map does have that information. I think it's part of Keely's presentation for Thursday night, is that correct? The timeline is-
Yes.
Which meetings are covering which subjects. Um, and we can work to get that information out in other ways as well.
Okay, the point I was trying to make was in a community newspaper, it gets pretty broad distribution so it's not just one activity. That's, that seemed to make sense to me, but whatever, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're following up.
Is there, is there any known conflicts for board members for December tenth?
I can't make it.
No. December tenth, okay.
I'll be here, but I'm not sure I'll be on time because I have a retreat.
Run the start of the meeting.
I have a retreat that's not scheduled to end until five.
It's comfortable.
I have animals to take care of, so we'll see. So Patrick may be starting the meeting, so be kind. Okay, anything else?
Really, I think she should be focusing that towards me.
Diane?
Um, the financial pieces that we got via electronic method, are we gonna get pronouns of those on, on Tuesday?
If that's a request, then I can make that happen.
I, I would like to have it printed out, please.
You can't print it at home?
Um, it's a lot better in legal size than it is in this format. I've done this format and I may as well just read it online.
Yeah, I, I know, my printer isn't working right now and I could not read it online. It's just like-
I've gotta figure out which, which, do I try my surface? Do I try my laptop as to get, because it, it's just trying to, to get the correct size.
Any information that we supply digitally, which is my understanding to be the preference of the board, if you need a printed copy, always feel free to just contact us outside of a meeting and let us know. And we can either mail it to you or have it ready for pickup. We're happy to do that service.
Okay, all right, anything else before I adjourn us? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.